Start on time, so today we no different, we'll start at five, and the ones that are not here, we'll catch up. Uh, I remember that council member Bateman, I mean, excuse me, Butler.
We're better before we get there.
Oh, we're going, we can start, we just can't do anything, right? Can we, so we're going to go ahead and start on time? We've talked about a lot of things. Alright, so that being said, we'll start off with, uh, Mr. Schoffler, in reference to water and sewer requests. And what I was going to say is, Mr. Butler will not be here tonight. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Wall and Councilmen Horace. Good to see you today this evening.
Take your mouth fruit. You're fine.
Over to, uh, we'll move through quickly. Uh, what I'm bringing for you tonight, good evening, Mr. Schoffler. What I'm bringing for you tonight is just basically a report. What we talked about earlier this spring, I believe, was when we did this, we made a change to our outside city water sewer tax policy. And we decided that, through Mr. Bateman, through some guidance from him, we decided that we could still meet the ordinance, uh, the code ordinance thirty-seven, thirty, I believe it is, by staff being able to go ahead and issue the taps as long as we obtain signatures, proper paperwork with the utility agreements and the annexation petitions. And then what we would do is, we would bring you a collection of those requests for you to determine whether or not the city needs to annex these properties or not. Uh, so what I have for you tonight is three requests that we have issued taps to over the summer. We have filled out the proper paperwork, the property owners have signed, we've recorded these agreements, and Mr. Bateman has certified each one of them as well. And what we're going to do is bring them for you, and staff has recommendations on annexation now or potentially to consider later, a later date for a couple of these. Uh, the first one would be thirty-seven twenty-eight Alamance Road. apologize for the strange computer graphic here, but I'm going to use one of these little pointers. This parcel is right here at the corner of Anthony and Alamance Road. It actually is contiguous to the city. Uh, this house has both water and sewer now. And considering it is contiguous, we talked about this briefly at a TRC meeting this summer, and we recommend that this should be considered for annexation, uh, pretty much immediately in the near future. Uh, just because it can be served, uh, right now with all city services and is again contiguous. Uh, I'll move along to the next two if you would like.
Daniel, this is quick, Daniel, is that only consented in the Mariposa?
Yes, sir. This particular, this particular parcel is on consent agenda for tomorrow evening, Saturday date of August period for October seventh, at which line that annexation would also come back from that evening. And our next one is thirty-six oh-two Harris Road. Now, this is out near Lake McIntosh, this is actually Lake McIntosh right here and the water plant. It looks like at first glance, it might be a good parcel to annex currently because it does have a considerable amount of city limits around it. However, this is a water request only because the city does not have sewer line on Harris Road. And this is, just barely, but it just is a satellite. So it would be a satellite annexation. And from previous discussions we've had, especially down Garner Pole Road, what we have discovered is that the statute would require us to be able to provide all services to this parcel that we provide within the city, meaning sewer as well. Uh, it's not feasible today that, for them to tap on the sewer because it plus the sewer line is down along the creek, there's an outfall down below the quarry in Huffman Mill Road. So it would be a considerable cost to extend sewer up to Harris Road at this time. But that might be one that you may want to consider a later date depending upon any type of sewer extension in the future in that area. And staff recommended against annexation of that parcel at this time for that reason.
Daniel, would that be put on the agenda in the city council and would, in effect, say, no, we don't hold code public area, we agree with the staff recommendation? Is that, is that the way we proceed with these? We may, we refresh our memory.
You could certainly do that, you could, uh...
A thirty-seven thirty outfall requires submission into the city council.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And, you know, with staff recommendation, I'm certain I won't say let's do it for the reason you're just applying.
Sure.
But what I'd like for the record, so to speak, to put it on the agenda, we recommend not have public area. If it is considered, it will be considered later.
Absolutely. Okay, and the very last one is twelve thirteen Gordon Street, and that is out and off the Dirk Street Extension, Birch Bridge Road, the northwest area of our E P J. This parcel right here, uh, to that, and here the city limits are in the green, it's about a mile and a half by road from the city limits out to this parcel. Uh, these were some of the C D B G lines that were installed many, many years ago, and they now have water and sewer, but staff had recommended against annexation at this time for this parcel due to its distance from the city limits. And, uh, again, I'd like to thank you for that change in policy. There's been positive feedback from the citizens requesting these taps. It's made it much more expedient for them to get needed water and/or sewer. Uh, so they do appreciate that, we appreciate that as well.
Questions from Mr. Schoffler. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Beal.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'd like to present the property that's been approved for demolition by the city's housing commission, and by approving this demolition ordinance, it will allow the city to have the house removed, the lot cleaned up, and allow a tax lien placed against the property so the city might recoup some of the expenses or money spent on improving this site. I'll just show you the highlights of this particular property. Six twenty-seven Cameron Street was condemned by the city on January sixteenth of this year. Uh, it solicited ownership to Caswell Elliott, and it had a tree fall on a very large portion of the house. You can see part of it there, but that's a better shot there, it took out the rear corner of the house. The house was given an order for demolition by the housing commission July twenty-second of this year. Appraisal of the property was made, and it came in at six thousand dollars, and that's quite a bit more than sixty percent of the Alamance County tax department's appraised value of seventy-eight thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars. This case was reviewed with the city attorney, who found no procedural defects in the matter, and staff recommends approval of the demolition ordinance. This is actually the third city initiated residential demolition through minimum housing this year, and we request that, uh, orders be placed on the consent agenda for tomorrow night's meeting for consideration of approval if you so wish. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from Mr. Beal. I'm good, consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, on my list, Mr. Bateman and Mr. Nolan. Welcome to the day.
Mayor, uh, we have the agenda tonight, several of the policies are required more in close to file on our application against that thing to the public transportation system. Uh, we have set a target date early, having the completed application in Atlanta, uh, so, on November first is here. If we meet that schedule, that allows us to handle the equipment cycle, if we have terrorism in place, maybe in a small, like, uh, old street or, I don't know if we'll get there. It's a complex issue, it has involved a previous approach to it. We have actually three policies to place on the consent agenda, Title Six policy, a D V E policy, which is disadvantaged business enterprise participation policy, and an ethics, uh, policy. Uh, I recall they were more to like for us to delay the ethics policy, in experience and interest in ethics. And this is the one of the three policies that apply throughout the city and not just to cover projects and, uh, and God, I talked to Mike about it, and he will not hurt our application to delay consideration of that. The other two we do need to consider, and I'll speak briefly to the Title Six. Title Six is your basic policy statement that you would actually make based on race, country, national origin, age, sex, et cetera. It really summed up the Title Six policy statement, policy of city residents and true new persons, gender, amount of race, fellow sex, age, natural origin, disability, excluding participation in, if it had to end at the top, and we would last protect discrimination pursuant to Title Six, so rights have, like, four. And with that, uh, policy statement that's been provided to you, we've given you some forms of all the standard federal transportation forms that we would use in that process. This policy implies all with respect to federal programs, federal incentive program, in this case with transportation program. Uh, it's a standard policy, we would ask in every place on the end of the board, like, that would really aid us in giving the application file. All these policies have to be included, and if it was not, we would...
Alright, so get me back to the April twenty, sir.
That's a complex matrix.
Okay. So what you're suggesting tonight is that Title Six and the disadvantaged and the transportation planning manager be put on consent?
Right, and Title Six, we can do the D V E program.
Yeah, I just simply wanted to make sure you know the disadvantaged business program was what the standards are, or stated to is heavily involved in certification of that. Um, and I've just listed those down here, and that's also in the document itself, but um, it's really to encourage those smaller disadvantaged business owners and businesses to participate in federal contracting, uh, so to receive any of our federal funds, we're going to have to have this in place. The certification process will be through N C D O T, it'll be a database, it's online for everyone to see. Uh, it's something that will just, uh, make a part of our contracting in any time we solicit or send out a request, proposals, something we would insert in that to encourage and invite, keep a database of those firms and directly solicit those firms to participate. Very similar to Title Six as far as certifications. Uh, I've just listed some things, you know, it's going to be through the purchasing department here, it'll be an outreach program, like business, uh, and, you know, annual updates for those firms, we'll have to restart it by each year, it's just not something you get and keep forever, it's annual certification, so.
So two of the three will be on consent tomorrow night?
Yeah, and let me come in that program. This is very similar to North Carolina's program, North Carolina's sixty-seven, ten percent target for minority participation. This program is the same program in different clothing, but it's a lot of bumbos jumping around, if you find an easy way to include, you come back to that's where you're at. In fact, they use the same database for participation.
And Bobby, just need some more time to review that, I already prepared, and I'll communicate my suggestion from this place. Okay. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Bateman and Mr. Nolan? Okay, here we go. Move on to transit service area, Mr. Kirkman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to talk tonight about the service area, particularly the connection to Alamance Community College. Uh, as you recall, Harold and, and August thirteenth sent a letter to Elon Gibson and Evan requesting a, uh, response by October eighth, as to the participation in the system. And, uh, this connection to A C C is a piece that is probably, uh, a fourth piece in their decision-making process, um, particularly for Evan, but certainly for all of them. Let me just remind you of the piece that we're talking about. As you look at the map here, this is Burlington, obviously, but this is Burlington to city limits, Alamance Community College here. So the piece here from our city limits to A C C, and we've discussed this, but just to remind you, uh, that particular piece, since Graham is not part of the system, represents seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars estimated, uh, in terms of service costs. So the question is, you know, will the city of Burlington extend services to A C C and pick up that portion? Um, if we do, that is included in the four nineteen figure that we have, that's, you know, the estimate we...
That was, excuse me, I wrote that was the top end figure, right?
That was the top end estimate figure for operational costs.
Right.
Okay. Um, based on the numbers that we have at the time. So, um, I'll...
Just another quick question.
Go ahead.
Another quick question is, how would you, how were we planning on getting to A C C without going directly?
Or you would just go on the interstate?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, um, obviously in the work session, agenda package, you had a letter from President Gatewood, um, from Alamance Community College, and he indicated that you had over thirty-five hundred students enrolled from Burlington to Gibson, as it codes, and over a thousand active trips, uh, to the A C C campuses in a, in a six-month period, um, which indicates, you know, that, that this would be a good supporter of the system, would increase livelihood as well of overall success of the system. So, um, overall, a, a good thing to do. Um, again, the cost for the city, seventy-two thousand five hundred, if we decide to do this, but, you know, these other jurisdictions are going to have one meeting between now and October eighth, um, if I've, if I've got all those right, and, uh, so the sooner we can let them know something, the better.
Of those thirty-five hundred, how many are day students as opposed to class students?
That's a good question, we didn't get that, that level of information.
Well, is this, is this scheduled to shut down at what time?
Right now, six-thirty or six?
Six-thirty, but that's something, as I've said all along, when we're here at that point, we're going to look at things like this, and any other employment or, you know, things like that, we may want to change the time to later, but certainly what they, they tend to go to nine or ten now, it's classes, I don't think we're going to go to that late at the beginning, but something that we need to go to seven o'clock to pick up a class or, or something, we would look at that, but at this time, we just haven't made that decision.
Did President Gatewood in his letter reference anything about bringing dollars to the table?
That's right.
Mr. Mary, the committee discussed, the staff committee discussed this, so, it's a failure of, everybody had, they've held the committee, and it's really been important to the community, being able to go to A C C. I mean, whether then public transportation is often more than just a service, it's often a tool, it really can be a advantage to the high people who've dealt with this situation in life, and the cost is more or less, uh, it would be important to the other communities because they also want to be able to serve A C C. We don't know whether it will be ten riders or a thousand riders, but the ability to offer that service to a number of people who will live, the reason I can tell you, my wife used to teach in A C C, and maybe some of you all have too, and there are large numbers of people who will really try to better themselves, and adults, and tourists are scraping by. And, uh, who knows, it'll add to the appeal of the system, if you can, and she may get ready, it would really be important for them.
And that was one of the things that was discussed, and they got probably a properly workshop, uh, or some of them agreed for what is the public transportation and trying to help, uh, put people back to work. So I guess my question, Nolan, is, when do we need to make this decision?
I would think, if, if the council wants to decide tonight or tomorrow night would be great, because, um, you know, again, these Elon Gibson will never going to be meeting the first part of October, trying to make a decision to get back to us by eight.
Well, I think we need to do it tomorrow because this is Jim in, Seale, and so we'll at least have to dialogue about tomorrow night, make us, try to make a, or attempt to make a decision back tomorrow night, especially the...
And add to the new business...
Right, I would, yeah. Is that our question?
That's good, but let me understand the issue, the issue is that the others don't sign up. Do we want to proceed and do we want to sprinkle the money, so to speak, to buy the tourists, right?
They don't sign up, yes. If, what if they do? If Evan decides they want to be part of the system, are we committed to go to A C C regardless?
Okay.
Because that helps them make their decision, okay, Burlington's going to get at A C C, we just have to pay it at A C C. Because originally, that's, that's what they were considering.
That's good. We'll go to tomorrow night.
So we'll put that on the agenda, and underneath this board. Any other questions for Mr. Kirkman? Thank you, Mr. Kirkman. Next, on the, um, agendas and staff report, Public Works Engineering, Mr. Kirk, Mr. Rude, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're continuing our staff presentations, and tonight it's Public Works and Engineering, so Lanning and I are going to go back-to-back here, I'm going to talk about Public Works, uh, nine divisions, about a hundred and ten employees, and then Lanning's going to talk to you about, um, engineering, so I'll just get started. First division, uh, street division, and city Burlington, uh, maintains all of our streets, about two hundred forty-four center line miles. Briefly, I'm not going to read all of these, but I put it up here so you can, uh, scan it and see, uh, some of the particulars. Obviously sidewalks, a hundred miles of sidewalks, we're constantly having to either replace segments or, um, fix trip hazards because that can create liability issues. Um, stormwater, maintaining, uh, heads of pipes, grade, catch spaces as part of the stormwater system, and that supports Michael Lanning's stormwater efforts, uh, with this press program. Snow and ice free removal, obviously our guys are there should an event happen. We had a major event this past year, we had to bring the contractor in, but our staff still had to do quite a bit of work on that. Uh, we did, we do have all, about a way out of those, um, info or requests and submittals into FEMA to get reimbursed for those. Um, special projects, streets gets involved with a number of special projects as well, and there's a, just a list of things, uh, that they help in sets with other departments. Um, projects and operations, sustainability division, uh, these guys, this division, Eric and Chrissy, they get involved with projects with different departments, um, and also maintenance repair upgrades, they get involved with scope, scheduling, cost estimates, um, credit upgrade, they get involved, they work with special projects, they were a big piece of our debris efforts in terms of the administration piece, there's a lot of, tremendous amount of paperwork to keep up with, also ways for treatment upgrades, uh, system, Bob Patterson and, and his department, um, they also manage our recycling contract and... Cemetery and grounds division, uh, big piece of what they do, they, they do, it is mowing, and they do about thirteen hundred acres in parks and cemeteries, and you can see some of the, uh, numbers there in terms of trees and shrubs, in terms of the landscape maintenance. And they also do all the planters and beds in the downtown area, which is a, a major undertaking. Um, they do about two hundred fifty barrels, uh, barrels a year, and so, you know, that tells you right there, these guys are typically every weekend somebody's here working, uh, those grave sites, uh, responsible for building for those as well. And they're not mowing, they're doing the inflection, which we're getting ready to start next month, and that's a, it's an issue about a few yards collected these years. Also, uh, work with newly society and, uh, work with them to maintain the projects that they get installed, and we have a contract that we manage, um, to maintain those sites. Tomorrow night, I believe Jeff's going to be at the council meeting to talk to you about the Tree City Award twenty years in a row, and Jeff's the advisor to the Tree and Parents Commission. Inspection Division out of City Hall here, uh, does over thirty, uh, three thousand permits a year and over seven thousand inspections. Of course, that covers building electrical, chemical plumbing, uh, trades. We also do commercial plan review, we've done fifty, two of those to date, two thousand fourteen. We also do residential plan review, which we added a couple of years ago to help, uh, offset some potential issues you could run into in residential construction. Uh, we also work with sub, uh, substandard, uh, properties in terms of condemnation, hearings, uh, repaired, demolished orders and demolition, and you called Ross Street from last year, that was a good example, uh, one of those projects. Sanitation division, services sixteen thousand customers a week, um, in terms of either residential, most of them are residential, have some small businesses, multi-family. Weekly, they, they do refuge, yardways, plant bulbs, junk and metals, and then biweekly is obviously, uh, recycling, and that's done through a contract. Terms of tons is you get a sense there of the amount of tons collected for each type of material. We also have B, B waste events that we do twice a year, and the next one's coming up October fourth. Building maintenance division, uh, maintaining over two hundred buildings and structures, uh, HVAC, electrical, plumbing and building, uh, issues and process over seven hundred work orders last year. They also get involved with remodeling facilities, this is a good example, this room right here was done with the city staff, these guys did work, um, and so they're very capable, um, basically, they also have to do some, um, model buildings that are viewed, and they're, mostly these guys are licensed professionals, which really helps us. Equipment services division, uh, they maintain over a hundred thousand pieces of equipment, uh, excuse me, a thousand pieces of equipment, and that's anything from fire trucks to weed trimmers, uh, they conduct it over twenty-two hundred P M's and, uh, three hundred vehicle inspections, uh, last year, and you can see right there, we travel a lot of miles with our fleet. To remind you, not only do we provide fuel for our own, um, fleet, we also do that for active and the sheriff department, and, uh, some complete numbers for you there. Traffic signaling division, we maintain signals in Burlington and Graham, about two hundred eight signals, uh, we handle all the signal timing, um, one of our operations engineer works with that on a regular basis. Our signal techs do two, uh, preventive maintenance cycles, uh, in a year, and, uh, they do a number of upgrades, handle all the trouble calls, they get calls after hours, um, on a regular basis. And we have about fifty miles of fiber that supports that, um, that computerized signal system, so it's a major net, uh, network of fiber across the city. Uh, street lights, they also have a street light, we have over four thousand streetlights, and, uh, last year they did a hundred new streetlight requests again. Uh, and also Chris, our city traffic engineer, handles, uh, transportation review in conjunction with me on those things, and Chris is also, uh, advisor to the traffic commission. Uh, last but not least, traffic signs and markings division, they maintain all of our signs and markings across the city, and there's some numbers there to give you an idea of the type of work they do on a regular basis, um, in terms of signs posed, also painted lines as well as thermal plastic lines. We have the contract for thermal plastic lines, because we don't have the machines to do that. They also assist with legal sign removal. Uh, last year they removed over fourteen hundred legal signs, and they're big in terms of advancement, we have, in the bear case, they just help support against. So that's it for, um, Public Works, I'm going to turn it over to Lanning, Chris here.
Thank you, Nolan. Okay, um, the primary role of the engineering department is to oversee design and construction of the public horizontal infrastructure, uh, to ensure that it's constructed to the highest possible standards, and for the safety and welfare of the citizens. Uh, horizontal infrastructure can be anything from roadways to bridges to sidewalks, which you see here, a C D B G sidewalk constructed on Madison Street recently, a safe practice school sidewalk, uh, along Sellers Mill, uh, sanitary sewer mains, water mains. And so, um, the, this principal role lends itself to other responsibilities in support of this, permit record keeping, power bill maps, destruction drawings, uh, assessment maps. Also manage the bridge inspection program, or by annual inspection program administered through the state. Uh, roadway easement mapping, prior to acceptance of any infrastructure, the city ensures that all ride, required roadways and easements have been dedicated. Uh, other functions include support to other departments, which is our main priority, uh, if it weren't for the other departments, engineering probably would not exist, uh, because we, we, in support of all resources, public works, recreation, planning, and from time to time, uh, police and fire. Technical support to the floodplain administrator, in which we aid in, in, uh, monitoring the flood, uh, plains around the city. Uh, we manage the city land disturbance program, uh, in the eyes of the state, we are a local program, so we review and monitor, uh, all land disturbing activities in the city and E P J, and the state audits our, uh, efforts annually. Uh, protection of the city public rights away, uh, many requests come into our department to perform work or installations in public roadway, uh, we ensure that these are done under the watchful eye of engineering and that is restored to like a better condition. Through the support of the city manager and the H R department, engineering has been able to attract and retain he, eleven highly qualified full-time professionals, three of those professional engineers, one engineering intern, one professional land surveyor, two field surveyors, two North Carolina D O T certified construction inspectors, mapping technician, and administrative assistant. And this high level of professional staff allows us to perform our many complex tasks in a highly efficient manner.
Questions from Mr. Rude? Thank you, Mr. Rude, Mr. Kirkman. That brings us to the city manager comments, obviously the manager who's out of town. Any, any concerns, questions, and records tomorrow night's meeting?
The manager asked me to make sure we're comments for him, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, so go ahead.
Obviously, I am not a good looking as a manager, and I'm sure if I'm not going to...
Sorry, I overlooked you, Mr. Bateman. No one told me that you were going to... Sorry I overlooked you, Mr. Bacon, no one told me that you were going to be involved in this conversation, so.
I want to break two matters to the council, number one, so to be lucky to be on the night, the alcohol request at Lake Camac, and the staff that, at the lake, police department, chief, fire department, land department, record department, and we studied on budget recommendation of the council. When we get there tomorrow night, our recommendation is going to be that much more extensive planning process needs to be undertaken, much more extensive reviews need to be undertaken before we go down the path of expanding visiting areas without all the concern. Our primary, look of this law, made with various reasons, how we came back to police, primarily related to control issues dictated by our state statutes, and how we ensure the public, and we have a bedded area, especially if control can be maintained, an amount of it's required to be. Secondly, I was concerned with the, I don't want to use the old cliche, once you open the gate, it goes farther, there's a lot of truth to that, because as a public agency, we have a duty to do process and oversee losses equally. We were afraid that committing a case-by-case basis, that we would not have the uniform standards, and the uniform bedded process for locales would be sufficient, so that you could run your lines out, that would be the standard recommendation for you, what you all do, it's of course a policy decision in the park. Secondly, I want to note that with your package, we did include a first track of a commission structure for the transit system, and it is set up such a manner as to hopefully allow us to expand it and include a pro rata portion of the, to represent one of the municipalities, all population base. That is my critical for adoption, and I certainly, we need to get started on it, to hopefully get it in place by the end of the year, and I'd love to receive input from you all, because it was either tripped, this is a new program for us, and you're in for, as you desire to see, well, it will dictate what gets you defined here, and that, I mean, did it serve?
Let me ask a question, if you go back to the request about, you know, serving alcohol addict camp regularly, is it the staff recommendation not to do that?
Yes. Well, actually, what the staff recommendation, he is, the staff undertake extensive review of all venues the city owns, and push, it might be appropriate to consider sale of provision alcohol, and bring that back to the council as an overall policy to be considered. Because they want, this question wasn't served or not served as a policy decision, we're not attempting to make that, what we're trying to say is, we really would like to present you something that was forestalled, and kind of a case-by-case basis, and get the subject matter of the exception.
Well, I'm going to say that, because I asked that very same thing, because I'd like to know, so anyway, I want to make it clear, well, one other final question, did, did the group submit an application, you know, in that form where you request this, where that completed?
Yes, sir, it was, Mr. Ward, it's been turned in.
Okay. So how did you compromise, did that?
We just got it Thursday night.
Yeah.
We're still looking at the insurance forms that they submitted with that.
You have, we took them?
They were submitted Friday, but they have, they'll be reviewed right now, there's, some of them were quotes, so to speak, that some individuals weren't going to get, an individual doing business as the Hope Foundation, so anyway, our insurance consultant is reviewing those.
And they'll have an answer for that tomorrow night?
Yes, sir.
Better than that, Lanning? Starting to say if you could get an answer for them, and send us the documentation so we could review it before tomorrow night, but.
I'll get that.
That would be good.
Yes, I'm sorry, will you miss more?
Mr. Mayor, there is one recommendation that came from the Recreation Parks Commission members, that's strictly a recommendation from that commission, advisory board to you, and, you know, does not have staff recommendation, that's strictly from the commission.
That pertaining to just that?
That one issue, that one request for the alcohol at Lake Camac on October the fourth.
That recommendation, get to do it?
Yes, sir.
The staff recommendation did not do it?
Mr. Kirkman, you have a question?
Quick question, I'll come to Mr. Bacon, now, bouncing back to transit, if we wanted to have a discussion on what the long-term governance might look like as these cities begin to try to make it.
We know that the direction the council has indicated us initially, and we split to a systems operation, because we have a tremendous amount of cost that, of necessity to manage, and that to be split to the council. Long-term, we have requests from the state, we have no information, there's some paperwork, we want to find out a real authority, which will allow actual governance, or something else, permission, and that is an issue for the council, and some of our lights and direction on that, at least temporarily, foreseeable future, I think the permission is going to be. I've made this comment before, the way we have tended to draft commission documents to the council, for allow for representation on that permission. The ultimate authority for any, for control of any permission of a budget, if every municipality participates, we have control of the budget participation they make, so I think that certainly, in the short run, certainly safeguards are in place, just by budget. But the long-term, I think, the direction the council would like to receive.
Well, moving forward, obviously, this topic's a very large topic for us to discuss, anything that you guys want to put on the agenda, feel free to do so, as opposed to, let's think about it, let's just do it, and we'll discuss it as it comes up. If we're working on a timeline, there's going to be a lady in thinking, that it out, we'll have a discussion. Any other comments or questions? No, we'll see you tomorrow night, thank you for being here.